And we're live. All right, welcome to our annual exercise in figuring out what the budget might have to look like. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the town manager as this is his show.
Great, thank you. We'll try to make this as quick as possible because I know there's a baseball game and that debate thing that's on, so hopefully we can get everybody...
Just keep it going for another couple hours or I'll be fine.
Yeah. We'll try to do this as quickly as possible. I've got to remember to point this thing in the right direction. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is we want to look at briefly where we are today. How do we stand in the world today? What are our challenges going into next year's budget? What are the things we've got coming up? And we've got some things coming up. Thanks Kerry. We've got some things coming up that are going to be challenges for us going into next year's budget. And it's important that we take those into account as we move into the budget process. I think it's better for us to take those into account earlier than to go into the budget process and then say, oh, by the way, we've got to deal with this, 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 and this. So, and then lastly, where do we go from here? You know, the idea is that it's a lot easier for me to have an idea of what you're looking for, for a budget. What do we think we can ask the voters for, for support going into the budget than getting to the end and having it be a number that nobody's happy with and we have to go ahead and cut, cut, cut? Or that I come in with a budget that's trying to meet LD1 and you're not happy with that either. So, as we get going, so where are we today? So the first thing is how did we do in the past fiscal year? Basically, we've done very well. We have a history of doing very well. The audit is currently underway. Megan is cautiously optimistic that it will be done and we'll get the report back sometime in December. Last year, it was, I believe, May before we finally got it. I mean, they've been in. I don't expect them to be back again, do you? So they're working on that now. But currently, there's nothing unusual, nothing jumps out at them, so we're in good shape there. We're also in good shape here. We're at about 99% of our department revenues. Expenditures for last year and 98% of revenues. There's some other things that go into the revenues that don't show up, so it will show that we will end up, again, putting money into the unassigned fund balance, which is a good thing. So we have a history of doing that and we continue to do that. The first quarter results for this year. Again, we're tracking as we should. We haven't had anything major, so our expenses are between 20 and 30%. Our big spender is sitting behind me, Mike.
Well, that narrows it down.
Yeah. So, with all of the... We have a lot of big projects going on and there's a lot of work happening and it happens, you know, it happens now. And so we've seen a lot of money going through the budget because of public works projects on top of the normal stuff. Paving is on track. We actually have a little bit of extra money, I believe. Correct, Mike? We did really well on paving, so we're planning on trying to get Porter Street done this year. So, you know, we did a really good job on the paving dollars and so we're actually able to get some more work done. One of the challenges with...
Just a minute. There's a question over here of where Porter is. It's off of South Street, up it's the shortcut running to the Green Thumb.
Some people call it A1A. You know, it's the high-speed cut across for everybody going to the hospital.
Right. One of the challenges with doing that, which we've already talked about, is whenever we do paving on those cut-through streets, we see an increase in traffic speeds and so the police have been made aware of that so that we can get out and try and do some enforcement there. Because it does. People have a tendency to drive faster when there's new pavement. And that street, I think, that's the one, Mike, you said that when we do the work, you want to have a police officer there?
No, we're going to block it right off the street.
Yeah, right. So...
Sightlines on that road.
Sightlines are so bad on that road, trying to do any work there is really difficult and people drive too fast. With that in mind, we're buying a piece of equipment with Camden that does a traffic counter and it basically tracks, monitors speed and traffic counts. And so we're splitting it with the town of Camden, which we can put out on these streets and actually see when, you know, if people are actually speeding. Because sometimes people think that people are speeding, but the reality is they're not. They're going the speed limit. Or we can get a sense of what time of day that people are speeding and then we can put some directed patrols out there. So, but, you know, our paving budget is well in line. We're in good shape there. We've got everything done and we have no cash flow issues right now because taxes are coming in. Linda, there's been like deposited money like crazy. A few million dollars last week, right? Was it?
It was almost $20 million.
Last week, yeah. So, money's coming in, so this is a time where we don't have any cash flow issues. But we will run into a cash crunch next February and March of 2017 as we start to spend down money as, depending on the condition of the winter, how bad winter is, you know, how much money we're spending on plowing snow and sand and salt. Typically, we've done really well with our budgeting with snow removal and so we've also stayed within budget because we've built a good budget and we stay within budget with public work stuff. So, we're typically pretty good shape there. An update on our infrastructure projects. Mill Street Bridge has been completed. That one is all done. There's nothing left to do there. And that one, we came in considerably under what our original estimate was. Mount Pleasant Street has been completed and we actually were able to pave a little bit further up. Correct, Mike?
To the top of the hill.
To the top of the hill.
Two thousand feet, I think.
Yep. So, we got a little bit more paving because the cost of pavement was cheaper, so we were actually able to get up not only in the area that was really critical, but continue up the hill for plowing purposes and get to the flat part of the top of the hill. So, we shouldn't have trouble on that road in the future. We did spend a lot of work. We did a lot of time and work making sure that the roadbed was correct and we got out as much ledge as we could because that was a problem and make sure the ditches are correct along the sides. School Street also has been completed, although I think there's a couple of signs and some other small things that need to be removed there.
The sidewalk needs to be finished with steps there.
No, the School Street.
The school is a school.
School, yeah. School Street. The next one is Summer Street. That one's a different story. They started putting pavement down. They did the first level, the first binder coat of pavement and I'm not sure when the finish coat is going to go down. But, yeah. Yeah.
How much over budget is that coming up?
No, it's not.
That was a bid.
That's a bid.
Five months for the work and we're not over budget.
No. It doesn't cost us anything. The only thing we add for cost is when we do something, when we ask them to do something beyond the scope of the project. So, there's been a few things that we've asked them to do that are beyond the scope of the project, so we have...
The work in ledge work that was about $2,000 a day probably ended up being like $13,000.
Yeah, right. But all of the other work, no matter how long it takes them, that's what they get. But we do have, we do have some change orders that I think... What are the change orders total up to?
I've only seen one of them, so I don't know.
It's not, there's not very many change orders.
Another $14,000, probably.
Yeah. So, financially, we're okay on that one, but it's taken far too long to get it done. The high sidewalk, the poles and power lines have been moved, but as typical, we're waiting for Fairpoint and Time Warner to move their lines. There's no real estimate unless Mike calls every day and to try to get them to move those power lines. The power lines have been moved, to move the cable lines and we haven't...
Fairpoint and Time Warner, the holdup now.
Yeah. And if we're not ready to, if they're not there by Monday, we will have to probably pull a plug on it and do it next spring. That one potentially will cost us additional money because of the delay. The contractor will want, you know, want something because he's tied up his crew. So, there is going to be an additional cost to us. And we notified everybody about this project back in the wintertime. I think it was...
Two months maybe.
Yeah. They were notified quite a while ago that we needed those lines moved and it just happened.
There's no recourse to have Fairpoint and Time Warner make up that difference?
Nope.
Since it's their fault?
Nope.
That's right, they rule the world.
They do.
Certainly worded letter and a press release. You remember the skit about...
Yeah. They don't seem to care. Comcast, not Comcast. CMP has been very good about helping us. They've been excellent about getting, expediting things. I think they're our best contact and they've done a great job of getting us, getting things done for us, but they're limited to what they can do because if they're Fairpoint poles, Fairpoint has to move them. So, it's been a challenge.
Fairpoint owns every pole in Rockport.
Yep.
Oh, wow.
But once the pole is moved, then, you know, you saw CMP, poles got moved, CMP was there and four days later, the lines were moved. So, they've been very, CMP's been excellent. So, the Public Works Garage roof has been put off until next spring because one of the reasons for that one and the West Rockport Fire Station is depending on how these projects fall out will mean how much money we have to put into these last two projects. The way we're going now, we're in really good shape so that if one of, either of these or both of them have an extra cost that we want to consider, we may have the money to do that.
Just refresh my memory because I wasn't on the board at that time. Were all of those under that bond?
Yes.
It was okay?
Yep.
The only thing was separate was the opera house.
The opera house was pulled out separately because it was a taxable bond.
New generation.
Yep. So it was a different type of bond. So, the capital improvement plan, Megan and I are working on that now. Unfortunately, I haven't, we had this week blocked out to do that, but because of some personal things, I haven't been able to spend that time on that. But the department heads have been, have put all their information together and gotten that all into us. We just have, Megan and I need some time to sit down and go through that. So that'll be presented very soon. So the challenges for us coming up for this year. LD1, I don't know if any of you remember, but a certain tall taxpayer in town came up to me after the meeting and said, I hope we don't see this LD1 override thing again. And I promised him that I would do my best to not do that. So, just quickly, you know, you all know what the LD1 limit is and I'm going to put this up here. I'm not going to talk a lot about it, but it's the limit that we can raise in property taxes without a special vote of town meeting. And because this is all, the PowerPoint is all online and this presentation tonight will all be online and people can go back and look at it and they can read through all this stuff. You guys all know all this. But our limit for this year is $3,483,962 and that's assuming we have $3 million in property growth. One of the challenges is we haven't seen a lot of growth in our value. And, you know, in fairness, in fairness to Kerry and Megan, they've tried to make their best guess estimates, so we have something to go on. And it is just that, it's an estimate. We're reaching 18 months into the future and it's really hard, you know, but their estimate is going to be a lot better than my estimate. So, and my sense is, knowing Megan and Kerry, is that, you know, they're estimating on the conservative side. Neither of them like taking risks and so I think what we're seeing is the worst-case scenario here.
If I might, is there any, I know there was other questions I figured I'd ask. Is there any speculative building going on that you're assuming there's $3 million's coming from?
No, no. Have you seen the next line assumes no growth?
Right.
That was just to give you an idea of the...
If we get $3 million in growth and, you know, who knows?
So you're planning on it when you're doing the budget, but you might not get it?
We might not get it, yep. Yep. But typically, we get some growth in value, but, you know, it's...
Kerry pointed out to me, there's only a basic $10,000 difference between one limit and the other.
Yeah. Yep. So, bottom line, this means if, in order for us to meet the LD1 limit that we think we have, that we're going to be facing, is that would mean we would have to cut our, take our current budget, the budget we have today, and reduce that by just over $300,000.
That strikes me as wrong because before we took out the $300,000 for the fiber project, we were just over it by like $3,000 or $303,000 or something. And I thought that when we took that out, we were still over, but very small.
I think that when we prepare the budget, the LD1 limits, we use our estimates because Kerry hasn't committed yet.
Oh.
We don't know our final commitment numbers until August.
So when he gets around to August, that's what really triggers it back. Okay, thank you.
So, for us entering the budget year, I mean, department heads, I don't know that we've talked about the $300,000, but we've talked about the fact that this is going to be, it's not an easy budget year. We all should know that, you know. Department heads, select board, and budget committee should know, this is what the voters are going to see and, you know, voters are looking at their mill rate and that's what they pay attention to. So, as we build our budget, we need to know that going in and be cognizant of that going in. So I'm not going to go through all of this. Please don't make me. But if anybody wants to, they can read through this. I think Kerry has done a great job.
Rick, just answer one question for me.
Hopefully he can.
What's referred to here as the income factor provided by the state, .0284, is that, does that number mean that if there were no growth, the budget would be allowed to rise by approximately 3%?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know...
Rick? The other thing is, is that LD1 is important, but also note that at the town meeting, it was not exactly the most controversial thing on the ballot.
No, nope.
And people do look at the mill rate.
Yes.
People are concerned about it, but considering what the mill rates are in surrounding communities and their level of service compared to ours, I think that people realize they get good value on tax dollars and that LD1 should be a concern to us, but not of as great a concern as other things.
Right. Yeah, we do have a, as our town goes, we're in good shape with our equipment, our infrastructure, a lot of things. We do a really good job. And to just simply say, we've got to meet this LD1 would be a disservice, I think, to the rest of the community because we've built, we've built up this kind of backlog of good stuff and we don't want to lose that. So, but it's just, we need to know this going in. So when I'm building the budget, that this is what I'm up against and I'll be asking the select board to tell me if they want me to comply with that. If they tell me they don't, I'll come back with a budget, but... So what do these numbers mean? So, we talked about this. If we had $3 million in growth, we would have to cut just over $300,000 from our current budget. So, we can choose to, you know, to go over the LD1 limit and we can also, it's our belief that we're going to be facing this. I don't know if we, have we done a calculation of how much more value we have to get? I think it's a tough calculation to get to, how much more value we'd have to increase till those two lines cross, that we'd be back to...
We haven't done it. It would be simple to do.
It would be, yeah.
I would say you at least have to gain what we lost.
Right.
And then some.
We'd just be making stuff up.
Yeah, yeah. But at some point in the future, yeah, at some point in the future, we get to the point where those two lines cross. It's not this year and it's probably not next year. Because we don't have enough, unless we get a big development that comes in and develops $20 million in new value, we're going to be facing this for a few years.
Are we talking now about the town's budget or about the budget plus the school budget?
All of those things, all of that.
So, if we need to cut $300,000 from our current budget and the school budget goes up by $200,000, then we have to cut $500,000.
Yeah, there's a lot of factors that go into it, yeah.
A lot of moving parts.
Yeah, there are.
To keep this on.
No, it's not my fault.
Yeah. So one of the things, you know, one of the options is that, you know, we can, you could consider placing a special article on the warrant and just say, we're not going to consider the LD1 and make it a, permanently exceed it until the voters vote to change it. That's an option you have.
Is that how they practice in Camden, essentially?
No, they voted every year. They do it every year.
Every year, okay. Thank you.
Historically, not getting really come in the weeds, but when did LD1, has that always been a part of Mainz? And when did it...
2008.
2008, okay. That's what I thought.
Last year was the first year that we had to deal with it because of our loss of value.
Right. But what are the chances of it being repealed on a state level? I mean, because you said...
Very slim.
Really?
Yep.
Because, because right now, the governor would veto it.
Oh, yeah, well...
Because it would be, you know, it could be seen as giving an open hand to the towns to just go increase their taxes. That's why it was put in originally.
Right.
Because everybody was seeing all this huge growth in property value, so there are huge growth in budgets. And it was the Baldacci administration that put that in and then all of a sudden, the growth in property value stopped.
Well, that stopped because the bottom fell out of the market.
Yeah. The housing bubble burst and all of that. And right now, you've got the thing, if we remove it, if the state removes it, it's seen as, oh, give the towns a free hand to go waste more money.
So, you know, one option is to ask the voters if you just want to, do you want to not do this every year and just say, we're going to, you know, permanently override it until the voters decide to put it back in? So that's an option.
On the LD1 form.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that unusual. It's right there.
Yeah, towns do it.
And last year, when we talked about this, when we talked about compliance and where records are kept or whatever, is there any feeling for what statewide the compliance is with this law?
Kerry?
They issue a report. It's on their, it's on the website, on their website. They issue one every year about how it's going.
And that's in the municipal association?
I'm trying to think. It's, no, it's not...
That's a good question.
Actually, it links off of MMA. I can't remember where, because the State Planning Office doesn't exist anymore, so I can't remember. It directs you somewhere.
Having gone over it last year, does that put us now in a hole that if we were to, if we were to hold our budget to what we did last year, cut all raises, whatever, that we would still be over LD1 because we were over it?
If we hold it till last year, we're going to be over it again this year.
Okay. So going over it once puts us in a hole, which makes it very difficult to ever get back under it.
Well, there's no relation, it's year to year. So what we did last year doesn't make any difference.
And also, and also, keep in mind, we had two extraordinary years. We had the Red Bull, we lost over 60 million. Then we lost Brewster Point last year for 25 million. That's not going to happen this year.
But our budget last year doesn't set a new level for us to start from.
Okay, it's coming off of the...
The limit is calculated as the way they showed it, irrespective of your previous.
That's about, it was a little over 8% of the current budget that we would have to cut in order to not go to the town for a special vote.
Yep. I mean, that would be substantial. You'd see losses in services, losses of people. I mean, it would be pretty substantial to get that. I mean, if I have to meet that, I can, you know, but it will mean some of the things that we want to do, we won't be doing and...
Well, I have to say that on last year's process, you presented us with a budget that meant LD1 as we understood it then. And that was a good exercise, I think, because I think it made, at least the select board and the budget committee, it's people themselves too, it made us really think hard about the priorities and what we wanted to do. And, you know, we made our decisions that we were going to go over it, but I think, for me anyway, it was a good exercise to really think carefully about those things, you know, well, what do we want to do?
It's painful for, at this end, for here, because, you know, here, these guys, they do a lot of work getting a budget, coming in with a reasonable budget, and then I go in and hack it all down. You know, I look like the bad guy and, yeah, and then, and...
How onerous is it during the preparation process from your side of things to flag that 8.5%? Which isn't to say that we're going to ask, we're going to ask you to cut it.
Here's what I would cut if I...
See what we're talking about.
Yeah. I don't think that's onerous at all. I think, you know, I can do that.
You could just have a manager's budget and an LD1 budget.
Yeah.
Oh, that's kind of what he did last, he was multi, it was like color-coded.
And then you could go, oh God, we're going to cut this?
That's a good suggestion.
What we did last year is when he cut something specifically to meet LD1, we changed the color in his column for that line item and we can do the same thing this year.
That strikes me as a helpful exercise.
Yeah.
It was very useful last year, I think. We ultimately added in a lot of the stuff, but not all of it.
Not all of it.
Well, you added in most of it, but you added some other stuff in that I didn't put in.
Well, but the way we've been talking about this is as though there isn't an LD1 budget and a budget that ignores LD1. And the fact is, there can be something in between.
Right.
And I, you know, I have to say...
We've never been wasteful.
Yeah, on behalf of the department heads, the department heads here are not, as you just said, Tom, are not wasteful. They come in with reasonable budgets. They don't come in, you know, we don't have a police chief that's asking for a helicopter, you know, yet.
Can you?
But the assessor wants a drone.
I can actually get you one for free.
Peter, you can borrow it.
But it's maintenance, it's going to kill us.
So, but the department heads have been very responsible and respectful of residents' ability to pay and the taxes and taxes. And they come in with reasonable budgets and I don't feel like I cut, if normally, I wouldn't be cutting a lot out of their budgets. I had to last year to meet LD1. But there's very few things that come in and I go, really? We, you know, that doesn't happen. I think we're lucky, our department heads are very responsible and they are looking out for the best interests of the town and the taxpayers.
Is the special article on the warrant for permission to permanently exceed LD1, is that a secret ballot? Is that the day before or is that a town meeting?
I don't know. Kerry knows more about it than...
Well, I didn't know though that we had, when we voted last year by secret ballot, I didn't know that was a requirement, so I don't think I'm the right guy to answer that question.
Oh, okay.
I assume because we voted on that one, I bet you it would be a secret ballot.
Well, he's saying it's a secret ballot at the meeting where you have to...
No, no, no. I was wondering...
You're asking, does it have to be, does it have to be at the day before meeting?
Wednesday, yeah.
Oh, right, yeah. I don't know.
We could look it up.
The question is the jeopardy of if the permanent exclusion doesn't pass, one would, I suppose one could reintroduce a new...
Good point. Do one one day and then you have to fall back the next day. I'll find that out.
Yeah. Good, that's a good question.
I didn't have to answer that question.
So, things that we, and this is not by any means an exhaustive list because we are just starting the budget process and it's by no means an exhaustive, it's a very small list actually, because we haven't finished the CIP stuff and going through there. So, insurance, we're expecting an insurance rate increase of about 10% and this equates to $53,400.
Health insurance.
Uh, health insurance, yep. Sorry, thank you. So, uh, that's gonna have an impact on our budget. The county tax, we're expecting a three percent increase, and that equates to twenty-nine, almost thirty thousand dollars. The library, we're, we're not, not sure if that will pass, but we're gonna, yes, we are sure that's gonna pass. Okay, yes, we are sure that's gonna pass, and that will add fifteen cents to our mill rate.
But that won't kick in until we actually build.
Exactly. I mean, it, it could get delayed for two years, three years, but ultimately-
Well, it's not gonna be delayed two or three years. It's just not gonna come online for two or three years.
Yeah, no, it, it just the, we won't take the bond out. So the, the impact of that mill rate increase won't, won't affect us this year, but it's something we need to be aware of going forward, that it is coming. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna affect us by about fifteen years, given this snapshot in time.
Owen?
Is that number that the state allows us to grow the budget every year, even though our valuation doesn't go up, does it have to do with kind of what you've put up here right now?
No.
No.
That things will go up over time?
No.
So that's an, that was kind of an arbitrary thing done by the state, cause it's just, I'm thinking, if, if everything's gonna increase three percent, yet they're only allowing us to go up-
Right.
two point eight.
Hence the problem.
It's unsustainable.
Yeah.
Kerry, what are the other factors that go into the LD one?
It's based on an index. I, I don't know which end, but like, like we use indexes, it's, it's based on some index that they use every year to figure out what that almost three percent number will be.
Population growth, income growth, as well as property value.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's an index they, they pull out.
Yeah, they just-
I, I don't know how much of a algorithm there is.
But the two of them aren't related, and that's the problem, is because all of our other costs are going up, that we don't control. And, um, you know, and I think at one point in time, it, the LD one thing, I hate to admit this, but I think at one point in time, it probably was a, an okay idea. But when we see the kind of losses in value and everything that we've suffered in the past, you know, in the housing market in general, and then when you add the housing market to, to the problems that we've suffered with our values, it really has hit us pretty hard.
Stevie had a question first.
Yeah, and I'm embarrassed to do this, having just paid our taxes and all that. What is the current mill rate?
Fourteen sixty-one.
Fourteen sixty-one, fourteen sixty-one, okay.
The, the thing that LD one seems to be lacking, that nobody was thinking about at the time, but anybody who buys oil on a contract on a yearly basis does know, you gotta have downside protection. And LD one doesn't seem to have downside protection. They were thinking that things were going to go up and never come down.
Right, that's exactly, it is no, there's no zero or loss.
It's all about growth, not, nothing else.
It's not about loss, yeah.
And when you have deflation in the eyes of LD one, there's no trigger. And maybe our elected representatives in Augusta should think about that and have downside protection for LD one.
You hearing that? Just in case.
I'm just a select boardman, man.
Just in case.
Just in case.
If you think our-
This is part of your listening tour. You're wearing two hats, right?
I'm not even wearing any.
You know, if you think we've got a problem, think about Bucksport and Millinocket and all the factory towns that have lost, big time.
Yep. Yeah, we're not suffering nearly as bad as other places.
Can I ask just for some context? I've heard the, the permanent override, if that's the terminology. When, when did we start talking about that permanently, about overriding LD one?
Just now.
Okay.
It's been there all the time.
It's, the ability has been there, and it just came, it, I, I just introduced that as an option.
We just pow out, we don't wanna do it permanently.
No, I just know when there was, when, when the conversation-
I think what happens is, what you do is you end up resetting your baseline.
So, I mean, that's, I, I just threw that out there as an option. You can also go the standard, every year, you just, you have it on the, you have it on the ballot, I mean, you have it on the warrant. And that's what a lot of communities do. It's, it's totally up to you. The schools, uh, we have no predictions at this time for CSD or MSAD twenty-eight. At this point, we don't have a prediction. They have been pretty, you know, their, their increases have been pretty reasonable in the past couple of years. And given that they're trying to build, we're trying to build a new middle school, I would expect that they would try and keep their, their budget low, but increased low.
Well, our share of that should change too, because of our loss in value, and I think Camden's value's gonna go up, isn't it?
Yep.
So that'll-
That'll help us.
Change the landscape there for Rockport in a positive way.
Yeah. I think we saw that a little bit already.
Yeah, we did, yeah, yeah, we did.
Now, in terms of laws that are enforced, like this LD one, and as you listen to all the stuff about the coming election with that, the one warrant on the, on the state thing, they've never enforced the law that was passed-
No.
with the fifty-five percent funding-
Oh.
for education.
No.
That's never been enforced. It's never been met, right? And that's the whole deal now. They're trying to find another way to get more funds for local schools.
Do exists, yeah.
I mean, that's why question two is on the ballot, and what, and the fact that you said, when you said that the school budget, like, it's two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand for town, but if the school budget has to live by that too, that's part of, but then we would have to cut our budget further.
Their LD one calculation is, they do their own LD one calculation.
Yeah, so-
And, and I, I haven't read one of those, I, I download them every year, but maybe four or five years ago, I read one of those reports that they put out about how it's going, and it was pretty much that ninety percent of the towns were in compliance with it, and twelve percent of the schools were in compliance with it.
Oh, wow. Oh, a value.
Yeah, well, there are no penalties. There are no penalties.
That's right. And now there's nobody even to even-
Now there's not even a department administrator.
To check it, to file it. So, um, so the, um, the, the technology school, if that's passed, the impact on our, on our mill rate, you know, will be about nineteen cents. So if that, if that passes, and that's on the ballot for November.
Not that, not that I'd wanna be a, a naysayer, but if next year's building for SAD were twenty-five million, is there a projection of what that might cost on the mill rate for us?
About eighty-five cents.
Yeah.
So eighty-five cents that we don't see until, that's something else for us to keep in mind too.
Yeah, it's not coming up until next November.
Yeah.
Three scenarios.
Take care of what you have.
Sixty-four cents to fifteen cents.
Yep. Yep. So that, actually, there is a presentation on Monday night to the select board, an explanation of, of that. So that's coming up on Monday night.
And they also have a full, they did a presentation here last night or the night before, that is also on the web.
Oh, okay, yep. So our debt, uh, new debt this year, we'll be buying a new wastewater truck. Front end loader trade in, the, we'll be trading in the old one and buying a new front end loader. That's on the schedule for this year. We're retiring the sand and salt shed bond, so that, that debt is gonna go away. Police Department-
So we don't have to make a payment next year?
Right.
Yep. Uh, the police-
But speaking, just to address, speaking of the, uh, question number two, there is a growing sensitivity because of the fifty-five percent, and everyone's looking back and said, well, when, when these things fell off, the towns, by and large, did not have their tax rates go down. They say, let's go even and let's come up with something new. Historically, towns have been guilty of that. So, um, you know, we're, we're not in the position of a huge windfall of, of something big falling off.
No.
But we do have to be aware of the sentiment that says, okay, we're spending less money here, don't automatically fill it up. I don't think we do that, but there will be that, an increase in sensitivity to that.
And, and I'm, you know, I'm a proponent of, you know, if you, if, if one debt is falling off, that's where, you know, you plan that, so you've, if you've got something coming up, you don't double up and have a lot of debt in the same time. You say, okay, we're gonna delay that until this one goes away, and that-
And that's one of the, that's one of the FAQs on the middle school.
Right.
Is, you know, why don't you hold off until high school that's over?
And so it's a, it's a matter of, you know, figuring out what is a good, a good debt ratio, how much should we have, what's fair, what works, and then, you know, keeping that stable, cause having debt go up and down and up and down isn't good either, so.
The sand and salt shed was one of our smaller debt payments.
Police Department, we're back up to, to, I haven't even started.
I was gonna ask, just when you're done.
Oh, okay.
I can read ahead.
Oh, okay. So we're, we're not sure about these things, these are, some of these things we're not sure about. We're just starting the bu- budget process, but one of the things that, that potentially is gonna come up is overtime. We need, we may need to increase our overtime, because we're gonna have a new, another officer in the academy. Okay, so you, I'm sorry, you had a question, sorry.
Just that this could possibly be offset. So for the two gentlemen that wear uniforms and have worn uniforms, who's bottom, to put it politely, do we have to kick to get that money? Because I feel like every time we've addressed this, it's a, if they give it to us, yet the money is owed to us, so-
Oh, we get the money from the, the other towns?
Well, then why is possibly in there?
There's other factors in the police department budget that could cover this.
Why are you asking so many questions?
That was part of my job.
Have you got the money from the state police yet?
Yes.
Yep.
And that was what I, it was the state police I heard that was sometimes finicky with giving the money out.
It may be slow paying, but they pay.
Okay, that was my only question. Okay.
How come we don't?
So, um, and also, we're looking at a video repla- uh, replacing the video system in the, uh, all the cruisers, and that would be part of the capital improvement plan. That's something that's in the, that's a pretty substantial thing in the capital.
What is that?
It's the in-car cameras.
In-car cameras. We are doing that. We have been doing that for some time, or is this something?
I could tell you. How old is the camera system?
How old is, yeah.
Ten years?
They're ten years.
In, in video terms, that's a hundred years.
Right.
It's shooting at six forty by four eighty?
Oh, shooting on Kodachrome.
Yes.
They can't get it processed anymore, right?
Right, yeah.
I'm just gonna laugh.
Question about the, um, I didn't see anything about the fire department and the changes that might be happening with northeast health. And is there anything about-
No.
The level of service and other issues that-
Nope. That's, that's not in this presentation. This, right now, I mean, there's some things here. We're not getting into the weeds of the budget yet. These are just things that we, we know that we've talked about and that we, to make you aware of. And one of them that has come up in, in previous years was the, uh, generator for the town office, and that's, that, that has been talked about and talked about for a couple of years. And that, the cost of that is about twenty-five thousand dollars. That may end up on the cutting room floor, you know. But, you know, we, that's something that we should have on our horizon and, and will continue to be there.
Tom?
Are we looking at a, um, a fire safe for the, the records?
Yes, yep, that's in the capital improvement plan as well. One of the options is the, instead of a, a fire safe, is a, an alternative to get rid of the sprinkler system that's in there and go to a different kind of system to, for fire suppression.
Like Halon or something?
Yeah, right. Some, some other kind of system that protects, uh, you know, comput- they, they, the same kind of systems that protect computer terminals and, and things like that, because right now, even if you had a fire sa- uh, fireproof safe in there, if there was an electrical fire in the fireproof safe, it's still, there's an electrical fire, cause it's lights, it's still, the sprinklers are gonna come on, and they're gonna ruin the material that's in there. So, uh, that's the, you know, that's in the capital improvement plan, so.
Well, it sounds like for records preservation, every, other than in there, would be a good idea to, to cap those right now, so that we don't accidentally destroy our records.
They, yeah, cause they're there. They're, they're, the fire, you know.
I would look into that, cause we, those are irreplaceable documents, literally.
Yeah. Uh, the opera house, uh, there's a bunch of things in that capital improvement plan. One of them is the, uh, the HVAC system. We've, you know, we've kind of MacGyvered that to, to, to shape. And it does work, but the, the idea is that that, when that gets to the point where it's no longer working, it's gonna need to be replaced.
We're, we're twenty years into a fifteen-year system.
Yeah, yep.
I got that slowly.
The irrigation and the, uh, one of the areas that we've been lacking in is putting-
Yeah.
We've taken money out of the irrigation in the field maintenance lines, so we'll be putting money back in those, uh, those lines. Planning-
Getting what?
Playing fields, ball fields.
Watering the ball fields.
The ball fields on ninety years.
Just to give you some perspective, that line is thirty-six, twenty-six, and it has had zero dollars put into it since two thousand and eight.
I know it's, I know it's a, it's a personal project of yours. I just don't wonder what it is, that's all.
Yeah.
And it's, we're making up for lost time, which is why we had to dip into the reserve account. We weren't doing field maintenance and upkeep on it, so we had to dip into the reserve account. And it's only because we had not, and that number is something I'd like to shoot for. I don't think that that's a hard and fast number, but it's better than having zero dollars into it like we've, we've had for many, many years.
So in planning, there's some items that are coming up. The pathways committee has been working on developing, um, more extensive pathways in town. And, and Jamie's been working on that with them. As you know, we've, uh, we have the, what everybody calls the sidewalk to nowhere. It isn't a sidewalk to nowhere, it's a sidewalk to somewhere. It's just that the other side of the road isn't, hasn't been developed yet.
Sidewalk ends.
It's, yeah, it's where the sidewalk is, yeah. So, you know, as I said in the, in one of the interviews, is that it, we're a little ahead of where we had planned on, but we took advantage of the fact that the state was supposed to come in and change those, those traffic lights. And we capitalized on that and were able to save thirty-five thousand dollars, about thirty thousand dollars plus, by doing the sidewalk now. It, they, they, they're putting in the signalization for a crosswalk there. If we waited and let them put the signalization in, and then said, three years from now, we wanna put in a sidewalk, it would, we'd have to come up with thirty thousand dollars to get the signalization changed to get across the, as, the way I describe it is we have the Rio Grande running through town, Route one, and we don't have a bridge across it. And, you know, a, a street light with a tur- uh, crosswalk is like a bridge across the Rio Grande for us. To get people across, be able to safely cross Route one is a problem. And, um, so we-
This is at the intersection of ninety one.
Yeah, yep. Yes, yep.
I know everybody drives by there and they see the cones.
Oh, yeah.
And nothing going on, so everybody knows. They called me a week ago, I guess it was maybe a week and a half, the state, and said, when are you gonna tie your, put your sidewalk on that side of the street? And I said, oh, maybe tomorrow, the next day. He said, well, don't do that, cause if you do, we're coming in possibly two days to take up the culvert across Route ninety, and we'll dig your sidewalk up. So that's why that's on there. And now they're out two weeks. Last I heard, maybe middle of November, they're gonna do that culvert across Route ninety. Their plan is to do it at night, but that is put aside.
Is that the one at the head of Route one that's plugged up?
Right at the end of Route ninety and Route one. It's been plugged for three years. So, so that's why nothing's going on on the sidewalk.
And just to add the last bit on this topic specifically, the only current plan that we have is to cross over where we're crossing over. But that lighting pattern takes no more than just a little bit of computer plug-in time to where if we did want to cross and have crosswalks at any other place at that intersection, we could in theory. It's not a plan that we're formulating now or anything like that, but there's possibilities and potentials.
But, you know, the, the key is doing it, getting them to do that now, so it has that potential. Or we'd have to pay the money then. I mean, we're, it's about, I think we were, Mike and I were planning on that, that sidewalk like two or three years from now. And, uh, so it got moved up quicker, because this project got moved up quicker.
So I'm, I'm gonna pull a Steve Beveridge here, a little bit of a history lesson here. When we redid West Street from Route one to Pascal, we deliberately didn't do the sidewalk and that curb that's along the south side of that, because we didn't know what we were gonna be doing at the RES site. Now we got this nice new sidewalk from RES to Route one, that other sidewalk is looking really bad.
That'd be one of my proposals, is to redo that.
To bring- Right, cause you're right, that, that, it's, there's barely any reveal on that curb now. It's like, there's nothing sticking up there. And the sidewalk is, has, it's a mess. Yeah, it's a mess. So-
And the, the bushes are leaning out over it.
So another thing, uh, the harbor, uh, we're looking at the, the possibility of more dinghy dock space, because it's, uh, one of the challenges for us in the harbor is enough space for dinghies. Uh, one of the ideas is to put dinghy docks on the north side of the Goose River, so that, uh, there's two places, on the north side and at the end of the, south end of the Goose River. We might be able to get how many feet of dinghy space there, Mike? Six? Six, right?
Sixty or sixty more.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Yeah, I just did the drawing for it the other day. It's, uh, that extension was forty, forty-six feet and then around the corner.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Around the corner as well, so.
So-
There's quite a bit of room.
Yeah, yep. So we can get more dinghy space in, and, uh, so people- Right. Right.
Yeah. Well, and there's at least some anecdotal evidence that people actually weren't using moorings this year.
Right.
Because they couldn't get a dinghy, so.
So that's, you know, that's something that's coming up on our horizon, uh. So, what are, what are we doing now? What should we be doing now? Uh, things that we need to, um, discuss or consider going forward is, what do we feel is an appropriate mill rate? What, what kind of increase is, is acceptable? I mean, it's, it's, this is a difficult question, but it's one that, you know, we don't, I, I don't wanna leave to the end and then say, well, that doesn't work. Uh, you know, we, we should be thinking about these targets, so I have, me and the department has, have something, some target to aim at. Uh, you know, I, I don't expect you to answer it today, and I expect, you know, what I'd hope is that the, as we move into the budget process, which we are starting much to department head's chagrin, is we're starting department heads, the department budgets about a month early.
Yeah.
About a month earlier. Um, uh, much to everybody's, they're all making faces back there, aren't they?
No, they're just throwing darts.
Looking at their screens, watching.
And they completely did win.
Yeah, right.
Game's over.
Um, is, you know, we're starting the budget earlier, but, you know, if you have a target in mind of what you think is an acceptable mill rate, uh, we, you're gonna know, uh, in November, at the, in the, in November twenty-eighth, is it? Is that when the election is? November? November thirty-fifth.
Don't give me another three weeks.
Yeah, we're gonna have, uh, we'll know, uh, whether, you know, we'll know the impact of the, the library. We'll know that the library has passed, right? And it will know the, the disposition of the tech school.
Yeah. Now, I wanna, I wanna put two things in here right now, is we can't control the schools.
No, nope.
And we can't control county. So, you know, trying to make our budget fit with what we think they might do is, i- is just gonna ruin our budget.
Right, but we, if we, if we're looking at saying, we'd like to keep our mill rate increase at this, you know, what our impact is, um, we, you know, we should think about that.
How hard would it be to, uh, to provide us with the increase in the mill rate for the last fifteen years relative to inflation?
I think we.
Wouldn't be very difficult.
It shows that the mill, the whole history of the mill rate will show up in the budget document.
Yeah.
Well, probably, we probably could, I, I'm guessing that was, that in recent finance history, in the past ten years, we could probably go back pretty easily.
It's, uh, it's right in the budget, too.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
But again, we need to look at what the town impact on the mill rate is.
Oh, yeah.
Because the schools in the county go all over the place, and that's, drives a lot of it.
One of the things I would struggle with, with, uh, when I was in New Hampshire working, and the town would be going to the budget committee and, and after the school had gone and already, they've already approved the school budget going to the budget committee, and then the budget committee would be trying to balance out the budget on the town's portion of the budget. And I finally said at one point is, you know, I, I, I am a total advocate of schools and education. But if you're trying to balance the school's budget, the increase you just approved on the backs of the town budget, you'd have to eliminate the fire department, the library, the recreation department. In total, you'd have to eliminate them in order to, to, to deal with that increase. So, we can't, we can't do that, but, um.
So conversely, you could say that if we're gonna do the LD-one overrides, it shouldn't be for what we do here. It should be for the school budget or, or it should be for things which we can't control.
For the school?
Taxpayers should know that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, all we can control is our budget.
That's what I mean. So if, if we're, if we're making a decision on our, on entirely on our side of the equation to ignore the LD-one.
Right.
That's different than saying, we're gonna ignore the LD-one on account of this thing that we can't control.
Yeah, we only ignore the LD-one on the town side, correct? The school side, they have their own vote to ignore LD-one.
Right. LD-one calculation deals with municipal spending.
Only the municipal side.
Yeah.
If I'm, or Kerry, one of you guys could answer. If I'm a department head, um, do I know every ten thousand dollars in my budget is worth X mills?
Penny.
A penny. So every time I spend ten thousand dollars in my department.
Increase ten thousand. Yeah, it increases the budget. Yeah.
I put together a budget, so I'm only interested in, in difference from last year's budget?
I don't, I don't know that they, I, I don't think that they think that way. I think Kerry probably does, but I, I'm not sure that.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm saying you can't, you know, that's, that's my question, is you can't really ask a department head to think in terms of mill rate.
No, they, they don't.
No, well, they shouldn't. They, I don't know how they could. They have to think in terms of.
Rick's point is that if we build, if everyone goes off and builds an, an eminently responsible budget and it comes back with a three-dollar increase in the mill rate, then it didn't do, like, the whole effort was wasted.
Right, we're not gonna.
So, so you need a target to, to hold yourself in check along the way.
Well, would your target maybe is last year's budget?
It's a good place to start, but it's also last year's budget plus historical increases.
Yes, well, yes.
And there may be some things in last year's budget that were one-off things, too, that'll come off. Be there next year. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but there are things in, in a budget like that, like we had to buy something last year that we wanted to buy again.
But that's why you bond things and that's why you do other things.
Well, yeah, but there's, there are still things that come up in the annual budget.
I understand. I've been doing this for a long time. But Bill, Bill made the point that, and I think I did ask for the wrong thing, when I asked for the increase in the mill rate relative to inflation. It's increase, I mean, sorry, increase, i- it's the town's portion of it that.
That was what I wrote down. You wanna know how, what, you wanna know what each component has contributed to the rise in the mill rate.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing for the past ten years, uh, we've, you know, given the way the budgets have gone for the, the budget data that we've collected over the past ten years in Excel spreadsheets and things, I'm, I'm guessing we can probably do that. Going back fifteen or so may be a little bit more of a challenge and.
I, that was an arbitrary.
But also have the impact of what inflation is on there, too. Because inflation is causing a lot of that increase.
Yeah, it's very, very little of what we do today costs us less than what we did yesterday. Um, there's very few things that we buy that we get at cheaper price. That, that said, this year, paving, we came in how much cheaper? Yeah, so paving, we did very well, and that's why we're getting Porter Street done, and we got that extra bit of, of.
But the decision was to do more, not, not to set the money aside. It wasn't do more. That's one of the things that we've, we, I mean, when I was on the select board, we talked about paving feet of street or miles of street. Now it's a dollar amount, and so if, if the cost per ton for asphalt is less than what it was when you created your budget, you can do more feet of road for the same dollar amount of money in the budget.
I remember the time when the select board was saying, don't do that street, because it's cost that much. Do this one because it costs that much less this, and so we can save X amount of dollars.
And then, of course, we had people say.
Rebuilding the street because it was in such terrible.
Because you put it off, and you put it off, and you put it off, and then people would say, oh, the select board member uses that street as their bypass going somewhere. That's why they did it. And so they, they took that out of the hands of the select board and just put it into the public works budget and said, okay, here's your budget. You set up your schedule, you work with CMP, you work with the water company, you work with everybody, and you decide what you wanna do and in what order, and if something's changed, you have the free rein to do it. And if the, the asphalt budget, um, allows it, you can pave more. If not, you know, you can pave less because the cost of asphalt went up.
I mean, Brendan's point is that when you have that situation where the asphalt price is much less than anticipated, you do have two choices. One of them is to pave more road. The other choice is to, is to put the money back into the UFB. You could do that.
That's true, but, you know, in this case, it was up to the town manager and the department head.
I'm not, I'm not arguing.
Decision to do something and for a specific reason and.
I, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying that there is, there is a choice there.
Eventually, the, the price of asphalt's gonna go back up, and so we'll be paying, paving fewer feet.
Right. That, that was my.
Amount.
That's exactly where I was coming from. That, that's fine this year, but next year, you have that much in the budget and asphalt jumps, and you plan on doing X number of streets, and you can't because that asphalt has increased. So you might as well take advantage of what you budgeted already and do as, because it's not that the paving doesn't need doing.
Well, it's, it's, it's up to the, I mean, I mean, the select board can set policy and say, you know, in these cases, you should do this instead of this, and that is your prerogative as a select board member. But you also don't wanna get to the point where you're macro-managing the town.
Fair enough.
But, you know, project by project.
Now, another point I'd like to make here at this point is, and actually, I think Tom had brought it up years ago when you were still on the select board, that we don't wanna balance the budget on the backs of our employees. So, you have in here, you know, it looks like it's, the, uh, health insurance is gonna go up ten percent. We still have to treat our employees correctly.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so.
We've lost people in the past that we shouldn't have lost, and we should have taken care of our people in the downtimes, not stuff.
Yeah, there's, they are, our employees are the, are best, one of our best assets.
I agree with what you just said. I would be lucky if my health insurance went up by only ten percent this year. And all of our voters are, are in the same boat. So I, I'm not saying we should balance the budget on the backs, but there are cost increases that everybody who pays taxes have to deal with.
Oh, yeah.
And we need to be aware of that. You're right.
Over the past four years, we've seen an average of a seven-point-eight percent increase in our municipal budget.
And we get our health insurance through main municipal, so.
You guys are doing well.
'Cause it's spread across the whole state. We're not just our own little pocket. Owen?
Trying to, trying to bring it back to this question specifically, um, I guess I would have a hard time answering that.
You don't need to answer it now.
But what I, what I, as part of.
Think about it.
As part of my thought process, and Kerry, we were just talking, he'll send it to me, um, mill rates compared to neighboring towns, towns within Knox County in general, just to try to figure out when people that wanna move here as part of what they do in the evaluation, that's it. So appropriateness comparatively speaking is something I'd be looking into.
That's in the budget as well.
Yeah, and I remember it is, but I don't have my stinking budget here with me.
But we're not looking to answer this question. We're looking to just float it out there so that you're thinking about this as we're going in. Because that, it will be important for us to know. If you have, if, if the boards have, and the committees have an idea of about what they want these things, the answers to these things, it, it's helpful to us if you let us, if you let us know now.
But can I ask one question? And I, I apologize for my thick-headedness, but currently, the, the mill rate's fourteen-sixty-one.
Fourteen-sixty-one.
And if the two, the bond for the tech school and for the library go, that, those two, the mill rates would combine would be forty-four cents. So, right there, you're over fifteen bucks.
Right. If they're both, if they're both applied.
If they're both applied, well, that, but that's, I mean, that's a scenario you have to look at when you're trying to say, what do we feel is an appropriate mill rate? And I was sitting here thinking, oh, maybe fifteen dollars, and I went, wait, wait.
Those, those things, yeah.
It's over fifteen with just those two items. There, there you go through.
Those two things could, could do that.
But not immediately.
Yeah, but not immediately.
No, but.
The library one would be two years, probably, before you saw the impact of the library.
Midco school, or, or midco school of technology could be next year.
But doesn't that have to pass all the towns?
No, it has to pass a majority of the towns.
Majority of the voters have to approve it, period.
Oh, okay.
Aren't we being asked to ignore that when we figure out our budget? That is, we can't do anything about schools. We can only do things about the town budget.
What we don't wanna do is look at balancing, okay, we wanna hold this safe at, at fourteen-point-sixty-one. That passes, now we have to reduce that fourteen-point-sixty-one by point-one-nine to come down to what our town can be.
Talking about previously.
Well, but we don't, yeah, but we can't, we can't look at that, but we have to, we have to consider the best budget that we could do for the town.
That's right.
And then, uh, address the schools where we can, if, whatever we can, whatever we can find that we can do. Otherwise, we simply have to inform people as to what's going on, say with the county.
We should be informing people what's going on anyway. I, I don't think that the media does a good job of informing voters on what's going on and why, because these kinds of workshops that we have, all the nuts and bolts, stuff that goes on in the town, people don't understand that if you want something in the budget now or in the next meeting is when you need to be talking about it. And not at that public hearing in, in April or May. It's over. And I, I think the media does a very poor job of educating people of how local, state, and regional government works and where the best influence points are.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use that to ask, uh, to make a comment about what we want the budget to look like. And that is, as head of the ad hoc library planning committee, I have been asked by more than one taxpayer to bring it to, as the chair of the budget committee, to bring it to the select board, the budget committee, and all the town department heads that if we're going to pass a two-million-dollar bond, please take that into consideration when we're doing the rest of the budget and try and be as gentle on the taxpayers as we can be. Whether or not that is possible, I just promised to bring it forward.
I, I think the reality is, while we were talking about the one extreme of not balancing the town's budget on the backs of the school and I'll have you, you know, reacting to that, the, the reality is, is that we are the most malleable and, and, and approachable in terms of where the increases come from. And we look at the county, we look at the schools, we look at the municipal, and we look at the bonding things. So, so I think that we, we historically fall into a, a sensitivity to the other projects.
I believe that.
As well, so.
I, I believe that. Yeah, I'm just, I'm bringing to what somebody asked me to bring.
What is the, at one point, Linda told me, what is the percentage in terms of this budget? Because when I talk to people about this budget, what I see them screaming about is the group that you just said were the most malleable. They don't see that of that hundred percent of that budget and that mill rate, what the small percentage that is the town. Is it thirty percent, Megan?
I'm doing it right now.
Yeah.
Seventy percent is the school, nine percent is county, which leaves about twenty-one or twenty-two percent.
Okay, and, and that, when, when somebody says, do a lousy job, or, a lot, the media does a lousy job. I, I don't think ninety-five percent of the people in the town understand.
On the tax bill.
I know, but, but the point is, they, they see this budget as a town budget, so they blame our employees, our products, having a library as the reason for that horrific budget. And it's only a, a fifth maybe of, of the total budget. So, how do you educate your public? I mean, you're still gonna have to pay money.
One of the ways you can educate the public is when a, a select board member, like previous members, not the current board, have run on lowering people's taxes. It's like, you're running for a position where you can't lower people's taxes. If you want to lower somebody's taxes, you could run for the school board. But Jeff, who has been on the school board, would be able to tell you, well, you could run for a school board, but you're not gonna cut people's taxes in, running, being a school board member either because things are relatively fixed. There's, there's only so much give before you throw out a civilized society. Which is why I'm back on this point.
Meanwhile. All back at the ranch.
Some, some states, and I've, I've advocated this every chance I get, is, is have the schools send out their own bills.
Yeah, yeah.
And that way, we don't have to take.
But we're the collecting, as you very well know.
We could even send out the bills, but if it was in their name, their amounts.
Isn't union doing that?
No, we, nobody is.
I thought Jay Fowler said he was sending out separate bills for the school.
I only got one bill.
I don't think that'd be legal.
You did? Okay.
What's that?
I only got one bill.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be legal to do that, but some, some states do, do it that way.
But I certainly, you know, I certainly don't wanna be in a position of pitting us against the school or the school against us. Um, you know, the quality of our schools is important to the quality of life in Rockport. And, you know, I, I, I'm an advocate of, of schools and will continue to be an advocate of schools. Um, and I certainly don't wanna get in a situation of, of feeling like it's us against them. Um, because it's, it's important to, to, to me and to the education of our kids that we have good schools. Um, it's just a matter of how do we make it happen and, and, and how do we get everything done that we need to get done? And, you know, I think, you, you know, I'm optimistic. I think we've seen some kinda shifting in the, you know, the responsiveness in the school, and I'm optimistic that we will continue to see that, uh, in the future. So, Owen?
And just a quick one to add perspective, 'cause we all like to compete with Camden. Um, their mill rate is fifteen dollars fifty-nine cents currently. So just, I know, I, I was just trying to get kind of general, and Kerry and I looked it up and did an increase. Um, so just something to, to shoot for, for that, that person looking for the community to reside in from away.
Right.
If you're looking at Camden or Rockport.
Yeah, nor is it apples to apples. We look at Rockland, which is up around twenty, yeah. But, but, you know, you, here you buy, how? Yeah, but, but, you know, you, here you buy a house for median house, 360,000. There you buy a median house at, at 200, but you're paying almost as much taxes or more. So, so none of that's really, the indexes like that are, are tools, but they're not answers unto themselves.
Yeah. Now, there's a couple of other things to keep in mind. Revenue sharing. The state used to provide 5% of the revenue to all the municipalities. It's now down at 2% and barely holding at that. That 3% difference is a lot of money to the towns. You know, ours as well as Rockland, Camden, and everybody else. So, you know, we've had to make that up on the back of our taxpayers. Homestead exemption, when it first went in, it went in at, what, 7,500?
No, it first went in at $10,000.
10,000, paid entirely by the state, or the state entirely reimbursed it. Then they increased it to 15,000, but the towns had to pick up half of that. So, that was another tax increase to the citizens.
That costs us $4.5 million this year.
$4.5 million.
And so, those are the kinds of things that the media and we should be feeding to the media to tell people, like, your taxes are going up on a local level because of these factors. You need to be talking to your state legislators and your governor about not doing that to us.
Well, the schools had that going against them too, you know, to be, to be fair all around. The, the state was giving the schools less, so the schools were having to turn around and, and ask us for more. It wasn't as much because the schools were irresponsible as if they were just trying to get their funds.
But that's how it's being played.
I got one more slide.
You got one more slide, okay.
I got one more. So, and so, we need to start thinking about, as we're moving into the budget process, what our priorities are going forward. What, what are the things that we want to get done? What are our priorities? And we're not ready to do that now. I mean, that's not what I'm asking you for now.
But you need to think about that now.
But you need to think about that. What things are important to you going forward? So, and that's it? That's all I have.
See ya.
I want to answer the question, what do you want the budget to look like? From my point of view, I want the budget to look reasonable.
Yep.
Reasonable. And then if it comes in and, and, you know, what we think is reasonable, a budget as far as what we want to do, and the, and the numbers come in too high, then it's up to us, this select board, to make the hard decisions. Say, well, that's too much. This is a very reasonable thing to do, but we can't do it this year.
As a manager, I'm, you know, I'm socially liberal, but as a manager, I'm fiscally conservative. And the department heads will tell, tell you, I'm not somebody that, just because they want something, that I'm going to say, oh, sure, we can do that. We can do that. We, they, they have to convince me that we need to spend more money. It's not.
You're aware of that, aren't you?
I guess it depends on what it is.
Right. Yeah, there are things that, you know, there are things that, yes, we, we're going to spend the money. But, you know, I, I have a tendency to be conservative when it comes to spending money. I don't, I.
You know, I'm looking forward to see the police budget this year, just as an example, because of the different way that we're doing things. And, and, you know, increased services to the, to the community, maybe at a, at a lower cost. I mean, it'd be interesting to see how that comes out. The assessing, how's that working?
It's working, yeah.
Can we move forward with that?
No man who owns a wooden boat can convince me that he's fiscally responsible.
Personally, that's a different story. But I, you know, I've, I've, I've made my living, all my pay and all my adult life is been paid by taxpayers. And so, I'm sensitive to the fact that taxpayers pay my salary. And it, it's important to me that I'm responsive to them. You know, because I've made my living, my whole adult life pretty much has been paid by you guys. And, you know, it doesn't, I know it doesn't come easy. It's not, it's not an easy thing for you. Owen?
I have a question about the capital improvement plan. And is, does the budget feel something different in a year where we do the plan versus? I know the plan is kind of a spread-loaded plan. But do we have to incorporate anything for the fact that we're doing a new plan this year specifically?
Yeah, that's where the, that's where the rubber will meet the road, because there'll be things on the plan that you're going to say, oh, yes, we should be doing this. We should be doing this, and we should be doing these things, that you're going to want to do.
Yep.
But that you're going to have to look at and say, can we? You know, can we afford to do these this year? That, that'll be, that'll be the tough decision for you. The good news is that for a lot of our, a lot, we've done a good job with capital improvement planning for public works equipment, fire equipment, police cruisers, those big-ticket things. We've done a really pretty good job of, you've seen that in a capital improvement plan type thing in the past. And we've done a good job. So, those things are already there, and they're already moving through the cycle. It's all the new things that we're going to be bringing forward to you that are, you're going to say, oh, that's a good idea. I mean, everything that's on the plan, that will come up in the plan, you're going to say, is, I, I'm pretty confident, you're going to say, oh, yeah, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. It's, how do we pay for it? You know, how do we work it into the budget and make it work? So, it makes sense, how do we pay for it?
That brings up a point. We're right in, we're getting into the negotiation with the public works and the police unions, correct? So, we don't know what those impacts are going to be yet either.
No.
When do those numbers come in?
Whenever we get them negotiated, it's just, it'll probably start after the first of the year.
In the past.
How long are the contracts? Three years.
Final numbers don't come in until after the budget's passed. So, that's a possibility.
So, back to the CIP for a second. It's sort of, we're doing for the rest of the town with the CIP what we've been doing all along, because we recognize the value of a 25-year road rebuild. And we say, well, if we pull $100,000 out of Public Works, this is, it's going to hurt, you know, 15 years down the road. But we've been not as conscious of that, or not as, we haven't paid as much attention to the CIP kind of subject matters for the last five years or so. So, so that's why the, the reestablishment of the CIP committee is really important. And.
Yeah, and just building on that, one thing that strikes me with the capital improvements is, that's maintaining stuff we already have.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. But a good portion of it is stuff we already have.
It could be buying a piece of equipment that's going to last 30 years, something new.
For example, the generator for the town office is in the capital improvement plan.
But it could be replacing the footbridge over the harbor.
It could be new docks at the harbor. It could be new extrication equipment for the fire department.
I've got to meet with those people. When are we meeting, when do I meet with them?
Well, once, we have to finish our piece, so you're not in a rush, are you? You've got plenty of your.
I've been on this board for a bit over a year, and I've been wanting to meet with these people.
Lucky you.
I know, it's nice that I don't have to go to additional meetings, but at the same time, I'm still trying to wrap my brain around this, which I believe is going to be a huge portion of this budget.
Well, it'll be spread out over a period of years. You know, it's, it's not going to be, everything has to get purchased in a year. You're, you're going to see a plan of, here's the things we need to, to look at. And you're going to see them spread out over a period of years. You know, a good example is what we do with hi, the highway equipment and the fire equipment, because those are big-ticket things. And you see how they're planned out over a period of years. And, you know, like right now, we've got, what is it, the wastewater truck and the front-end loader is on the plan. And, and, you know, last year, we had, it was a purchase of a.
One ton.
One ton, just one, one ton, correct. And so, there's, it, there's a plan of how the purchases are going to get done. And the same thing with fire equipment, that, there's a plan of how that stuff gets done also.
And cruisers.
I just worked with Mike and Abby to, on a, it's an AutoCAD drawing of the harbor, showing what our current infrastructure is. And then all of the things that they currently have in their plan, you know, about improving the waterfront over some unspecified period of time. And this is everything that they can envision right now. And, and so, you can see it. There's a graphical representation of here's where we want to get to. Is it going to happen this year? No.
Is there any merit to having, now, I'm just throwing it out there, and I'd love to be corrected. Is there any merit to having a capital maintenance plan and a capital improvements plan? One on the stuff we already have and making sure that that stuff stays good? And one on the things we want and making sure we can pay for those over time?
The maintenance plan usually goes within the department's budget.
That's the annual budget.
And there'll be reserve funds for things like that. And we've reserved funds for capital improvement projects. If we decide that we're going to buy a columbarium, we decide how much money we're going to put into the fund, we reserve fund every year so that we're going to get it in year 12 or year 5 or whatever.
This is why I got prickly about that money for, for the fields. It's not because we shouldn't be spending the money, but because if anything can be predicted, it's that, right? And that's just in your budget.
A capital, a, a good way to look at a capital improvement plan is it provides context to all of your, your big-ticket expenses. So, if you look at how things lay out, and you might know in, you know, in three years, you can't do this because you've already got this going on. So, it puts it all together, like Jeff was saying, that, that we haven't had as, as contextual an approach before. We've been taking them as they come, rather than thinking of them through as a whole thing.
And I guess my, my only end goal was, if you own something, you should at least damn well make sure that thing that you already own is properly set up for the future. And having a conversation about a new thing you want to buy should, just in my opinion, should be a separate conversation.
Sometimes the naming of the, we call it a capital improvement plan, but it's also, it's a capital improvement plan and maintenance plan for big-ticket things that happen once every 25 years. A new roof in a building, repaving a parking lot.
Father, in terms of a vehicle that has a life of 10 or 15 years, or at the pace of a fire truck, more than that. You know, you have the fire truck, and you know that in 20 years, you're going to need a new one. So, it's not something. You have a plan for replacing it. You maintain the one you have while you have it, but at the same time, you know that its, its value is reduced every year, and you have to.
But in terms, so. Building on what Owen's talking about, and I don't have a, a lot of historical context here, but if there are line items in the budget and the values in those are zero, it'd be great to have those flagged. Because.
Felt like we did that la, last time, didn't we?
Yeah, because we've, we've done some things with consolidated line, consolidating lines, you mean? We had some lines that were zero, and we've taken them out, correct? Because they, they've been reclassified or something else, we're doing something different.
And sometimes those zeros are, are carryover from a three-year look back.
Yes, right.
Where you had something in the first year, and you're now the third, and it, it wasn't appropriate.
It's not that there can't be a zero. It's that sometimes a zero reflects a lack of forethought.
Right. Or, yeah, there are potentially times of that, but it's, it's more often than not, it's because we've reclassified something, and that's the way, that's the line we put it in.
What I'm wary of is that, my understanding is, for instance, that the conservation commission hasn't really contributed much of a budget for the last several years.
Yeah, and I'm expecting we will see a different budget this year.
And, and the exercise of pulling up last year's budget and just sort of comparing numbers, it's pretty easy to miss the zeros. But, but those zeros could just be that there wasn't a robust process, so.
Well, there's two different types of zeros. There's the zeros that I was getting on to, 3626 field maintenance. That was one to where there needed to be money in there. But then there's like lime kiln restoration that X amount of years ago was necessary to have that line in there, but we're not, we're not carrying that forth, so that one could go away.
I, I think you'll see your questions answered in the documentation that's being required from doc, from department heads this year. That's different from years past. They're being asked to be much more descriptive in their increases and decreases than has been required.
The, the other, the other thing that we're doing, and on top of, you know, having it done earlier, is, one of our goals is to have the budget be much more readable by the average resident. And to, to, you know, I think we have a really good budget right now, but I think we can improve it and make it better. And so, we're working on trying to make a budget that's more readable. And then people can continue to dig down for more detail. They can drill down and get as much detail as they want, or they can start out and they get more of a narrative description of this is what the budget is doing, and here's the important pieces.
I'm footnote 243. Brendan's question or guidance on, on the zero values. One of the, one of the values of having open boxes, for instance, the lime kilns, we're, we're just throwing out there as an example. Do we want to keep that line as a line, even though we're not funding it, in order to bring it up as a discussion point this year?
I think that's, that is really the point that I was getting at, is that, you know, a, a line causes you to, to look at it. And it causes you to make a decision. And if, so I would expect people to, to push back. I, I don't want to, I'd, I'd rather have a longer spreadsheet, a more detailed spreadsheet, and a mechanism for paying attention to areas where the values are large enough where we can actually make some difference. I can, I can, I can deal with the detail from my own.
Just a question, this is off that, but of the bonds we have out, how many will be expiring in the next three years?
Not many.
No? I mean, we don't have many to begin with.
No, we don't have.
The salt.
Count of indebtedness is very low, has been.
And that's something that people aren't necessarily aware of, because they don't read.
The salt shed retires this year. We've already made the last payment on that. The original TIF bond will expire within the next six years. But for the most part, that, that's it.
And I mean, that's, that's a little bit of a, a help-selling point when you're asking for 44 more cents in the, in the mill rate now, because there will be something going away.
But there's, the, like, the TIF bond was for the sewer. So, it doesn't impact the whole budget, it only impacts the wastewater budget, which is completely separate.
Jan, can you ask your question again? I liked your question.
Which question?
What was the payment on the salt shed?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, 33,000.
15,000.
33.
We're 33, okay. And, and we bonded it because it was going to last a long time.
That, and the initial.
I think 10 years ago.
Initial cost was. How much?
And that was, that was annually?
33,000 annually.
Oh, oh, I want to know how much.
Well, not necessarily, because it wasn't level debt payment.
Oh, okay.
Level debt payments, you pay the same amount every year. That bond was not done as a level debt payment. So, the initial payment was in the 40, 50,000 dollar range, and it has decreased to.
So, it's basically a $300,000 building, about that?
I would guess.
Uh, the salt shed was 460,000.
Thank you.
10 years ago.
10 years.
2006.
So, you bonded, because it's going to last forever, and you can't put that out of budget.
Salt would never corrode anything.
One of the other things that we need to keep in mind of is what's not on there that we should be looking for. You know, you, we've read a lot of letters, well, I've read a lot of letters in the paper about, why did the select board allow the deterioration of the library to the point where it has to be replaced? How did they allow the mold to create in there? It wasn't something, yeah.
At least they're blaming you now, not the library committee.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have other plans in the same manner? You know, I know for the, the Opera House, we're all watching it, because we just did a lot of money on it, and we've got a plan on that. But, you know, what about the, well, Andy Field's wastewater building down there at Public Works?
My experience has been, it's never been a priority of any of the previous managers. It's not been something that's been big.
And I think that gets to the point of what I was asking about with, when you own and you got something, making sure that that's set in stable.
But again, unless the question is asked, it can't be answered, it's not going to be answered.
What department owns that building?
Public Works.
Wastewater.
We're just talking wastewater.
Yeah. That would be us, over here.
That would be you. They'll pay that. I want to know what you guys are thinking about, what you're thinking about in terms of the optic fiber.
Six different things.
Well.
How many people are in the room?
It's still, it's still burning.
Still learning, okay.
It went down in flames.
That part I remember.
Well, we had a conversation this morning about it, that Rick informed us that, you know, the fact that it failed might not have necessarily been a bad thing, because things are changing so quickly in the industry that we may be able to get it at a much lower cost in the near future.
Well, the voters will tell you that every single time you bring it back. If that's your sales job, is, I'm glad you, I'm glad you said no, because now it's cheaper.
It's not going to work as well.
There's a bunch of changes that are coming in the, in, in that area. I mean, the cost of fiber is the cost of fiber. It's the cost of the engineering, the cost of putting it up. All of those costs are, and is all, is all changing pretty dramatically. And, you know, in talking to, I talked to Fletcher yesterday, and he was saying, he said it before to me. He said, I don't, he said, we were so far ahead of the curve that, he said, we may benefit from the fact that it, the envelope is getting pushed, and, and some of those other prices are going to start to come down. The, the way we engineer and design the projects, that'll come down. The cost of providing the service is going to come down. The cost of fiber is the cost of fiber. The cost of fiber is the cost of fiber. You know, it's, it, that's the, the fiber that go, the actual stuff that goes on the poles, that's not gonna change.
How mu, how, wait, wait, wait. A, you can't say that, I come out of the high-tech world, and the cost of anything is never the cost of anything ten years later. The more than, the more you make of it, the cheaper it becomes. So what percentage of the project is the cable?
Very small percent, only about fourteen percent is the actual.
That is not gonna save you a whole lot of money, no, you're right.
Yeah, it's only, it's a very small, the cost of the total project, a very small percentage of it is the cost of the stuff, the, the cable that's on the pole.
Because that's always gonna get cheaper.
But there, there are, and there's a number of other things, there's, there's price modeling that's changing a lot, and things like that, in terms of the final service, which, which affects everybody. But to answer your question, I think more directly, the technology committee has, while rebuffed for a moment at the town meeting, has been spending their time looking, doing the responsible thing, which is looking at public-private partnerships that would cut the price in half and things like that, or, or even more so. So we haven't lost the, the core group of people that are working on keeping Rockport in the forefront technol, technologically. And also at the very same time, saving almost each and every taxpayer a fair amount of money every month in the end. And so we were not only out ahead of the curve, but we were, we were bereft in our ability to, to speak with all the citizens that, that, who, who vote. So there's effort right now in talking with bunches of larger corporations, some of which have, have no main presence at all yet in terms of public-private partnership, and, and we're sort of catching our breath and, and seeing what the next responsible move is.
Do you anticipate putting money in this year's budget for that?
No.
No.
A whole, a whole number or something?
Yeah.
No.
Do, and, does the technology committee anticipate interim reports, so that people know that they're still alive and.
Yeah, that's why they, January.
Yeah, January, I believe it is.
Thank you.
Getting to that time, that game is waiting.
The Cleveland clinched, they are in the World Series, so we will not be here next week.
You're gonna be at the game.
Meaning the lady in purple and me.
And Thomas already graduated, so he's not in Cleveland anymore.
Yeah.
As, as you please.
Is that it? All right.
Thank you, Juniper.
Thank you, Juniper.